Alter order, July 12th, 2021, meeting of the zoning board of appeals. Everybody could please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
There's a couple of new people. We have an alternate, F.L. Gorman for tonight, and Steve Fantuso is standing in as our deputy town attorney. And with that, we're going to go without what the office staff... This is only the second time I chaired, so I hope everything goes okay. Before we begin, I have a couple of few housekeeping rules we usually go over. The fire exits are located to your left of this room. In the event of a fire, you would be notified by announcement. If notified, please move in a calm and orderly fashion to the exits to your left. You can use either a north or south building stairway. Please do not use the elevators. The meetings are recorded by our secretary tonight, it's Donna, for the purpose of record and minutes, not verbatim. So please identify yourself with your name and address each time you come to the podium and speak into the microphone. The board will follow the items as they appear on the agenda, extra copies of which are available on the table near the door. After the case has been called, the applicant or the representative shall come to the podium, identify him or herself, state their name and address, and be sworn in and then present their case. The zoning board members will then have the opportunity to question the applicant. All questions are to be directed to the board only. Then the case will be open to the public input. Anybody wishing to speak to the board regarding this application will be asked to come to the podium, identify themselves along with their name and addresses, and direct their questions to the board only. There are three categories: those who are in favor of the application and those that are opposed to the application, or anyone that who just wants to speak about the application or its subject matter. Once all input has been completed, the applicant or the representative will be given an opportunity to respond to any public input. Once that's completed, then I will close the case and continue to the next case. After all the cases have been heard, the board will take a short recess and then return to deliberate. Each case in order of the applicants still present. If any of the applicants have left, we will go to the next case in order and so on. In other words, if the first applicant has left and the second case is still here, we will take the second case then return to the first after we have completed all that are present. No further input is allowed at this point, but you can stay and listen to the deliberation. If you wish to leave, you can find out the results by calling Planning and Zoning Board tomorrow morning after 9:00 a.m., or watch the results on Spectrum. As I think it's at 13:03, am I right? Or has it changed?
13:03.
Or visiting the town website. At this time, I would like to call the first case.
Very good. ZB 2021-06-10. Upon the made request by Gino Nitti Esquire, acted as agent for Hollywood Traders LLC DBA Hollywood Treasures for use variance to operate a secondhand dealership on premises 535 East Ridge Road in a C business district.
Joe, do we need a motion to move that off the table? It wasn't tabled, I think it was just adjourned to this meeting? Was that withdrawn?
I believe it was postponed by the applicant at the applicant's request, so it was never taken up at last month's meeting.
Can you state your name and address for the record?
Yes, thank you. I am Gino Nitti. I'm an attorney. I submitted the application on behalf of Mr. Barretto or Hollywood Traders. Mr. Barretto is the principal shareholder of that company. Tonight, I'm going to be assisted by my colleague Salvatore Lichardello, who's also an attorney. My office address is 48 Running Brook Lane. It's 14626, a Rochester mailing address.
And I don't have to square you just because you're both attorneys?
Understood. Just briefly, before I turn it over to Mr. Lichardello, I'd like to think that we laid out the crux of our application in the submission that we provided to the board over a month ago. I think there's a couple of, hopefully, key points that we can discuss. I think we've covered all of the legal requirements that are required to be addressed when making this kind of an application. And then as an additional point, I think from an equity standpoint, I'm hoping the board will consider the fact that Mr. Barretto, prior to purchasing this property, was approved for a secondhand dealer's license at the location that's being proposed. I think that's a very important point here. To sum it up, he relied, to his detriment, hopefully not, on that representation that he'd be able to simply move his business. Honestly, it's about 500 yards difference, I think. He's actually measured it. I'm sure the board knows this, but Mr. Barretto is currently doing business in the town of Ramonda Coit. He's been here for almost a decade, I think. So we're not talking about a situation where he's coming in from the outside and trying to establish a new business. He's been here, and he has been grandfathered into this zoning area once the change was made. So I think with that, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Lichardello. He'll introduce himself to you, and any questions you have, he'll be prepared to address them. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, members of the board. My name is Salvatore Lichardello. Address is 8242 East Bluff Drive, Penyan, New York, 14527. As Mr. Nitti touched on earlier, I think the key point here is that before the contract was entered into to purchase this property, Mr. Barretto was issued a secondhand dealer license from the town chief of police. And in good faith reliance on that license, purchased the property, made subsequent renovations, and has made arrangements to move Hollywood Treasures to the new location. I'm going to briefly touch on the factors that were laid out in the letter. If you guys have any questions, feel free to stop me. But as far as the four factors are concerned, we feel they're easily met. The property has unique characteristics, namely that the existing structure is very large, very narrow, and has two stories. So it's 60 feet of storefront, and it's 160 feet deep, and it has two stories. So it's 19,200 square feet of usable space, which makes it extremely difficult to accommodate one single use. As you may have seen on attachment E, we ran through all of the permitted uses for the C business district and laid out why each of those uses would not be able to operate on that property and realize a reasonable rate of return, which goes into that factor. We looked at the possibility of demolishing the building and doing new construction to a permitted use, and we feel that it would be very unduly burdensome to do that. All in all, demolition and new construction would cost north of $1.5 million to build this type of storefront, you know, around 10,000 square feet, where we feel that Hollywood Treasures could easily operate out of the existing storefront, utilize the existing structure to its fullest potential, and be able to use such a large, narrow space. This goes back to the point of the secondhand dealer license being issued before the property was purchased, but we feel that this was not self-created and that it was, you know, the applicant purchased the property in good faith reliance on the license that was issued by the town chief of police. And we did cite to some precedent that where somewhat similar situations have happened. I think one case was like a building permit that was issued, but along similar lines where an applicant relies on officially issued permit or license from the town to his detriment. As far as the character of the neighborhood is concerned, you know, we're less, approximately a quarter mile from, you know, between the two locations. In addition, we feel that the new location is even better suited for Hollywood Treasures, mostly because the neighboring businesses are of a type that are traditionally kept from residential uses or maybe less desirable commercial uses, such as the Billiards Hall that's next door or the Smoke Shop that's next door. We feel that the character of the neighborhood will not be disturbed. So as far as the four-factor use variance test, we do feel that each point is covered. And then, you know, it's just from a public policy position here. You know, at the end of the day, you have one nonconforming use. It's not changing the number of nonconforming uses in the commercial district. You're simply moving it about a quarter mile down the road. And the applicant plans on closing the old location, which would open that up for a new tenant to open a much easier space to lease than 535 East Ridge, the old Salvation Army building. I think the uniqueness of the property is also exemplified by how long it was vacant. We believe it was roughly six years that that property sat vacant. It's very tough to accommodate a single permitted commercial use in such a large space. And Hollywood Treasures is ready and able to fill that space and free the preexisting commercial space for a new tenant. So I think I touched on everything. If you guys have any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Are there any questions from anybody? Carrie, even though he's already got an existing building with that, what he's doing, buying and selling, this is totally different going to this new location?
Yeah, so at his current location, it is Zone C Business. He is at that location prior to the local law or the local zoning changing that then identified that these types of business operations need to be located in manufacturing districts. So at their current location, they were deemed preexisting nonconforming. The purchase of the building was made in an area that's also in C business. However, the preexisting nonconforming only stands with the current location and doesn't carry over. And that's when we advised that a use variance would be required in order to be able to operate at this location.
Anybody else?
I'm curious. It looks like Carrie sent a letter out on April 8th before you closed, saying that it was not a conforming use in that district? Right, because your closing statement, do I have that right? The closing statement is...
I'm not sure if the closing statement was prepared the same day that the purchase offer was signed. But I know that the purchase offer was signed after the license was obtained. I cannot answer that. I'd have to get back to you on that at that point. Okay, so he did get the letter after the closing had taken place.
Okay.
Not sure why the discrepancy between the closing statement.
Hey, the closing date was the 9th, and she sent the email on the 8th. So I think that's what you're bringing up, right?
All right, I'm not... Okay, so he had got the letter by mail. He didn't see the email or didn't receive the email. I'm not sure. The applicant did not receive that notice until after the closing.
Yeah, I can actually attest, and I'll double-check my outgoing emails. Both, actually Donna Martello and I had attempted to reach the owner of the property, the new owner of the property, to advise him of the situation. The first couple of emails went unanswered, and I think that's what led us to send something hard copy to ensure that they received the communication and were aware of the circumstance and what might be needed to move forward. I'll verify that during the break if you'd like.
Okay, thank you.
And I believe the applicant called back to the town as soon as he received the letter by mail, because that was the first time he had received it.
Anybody else?
Yeah, I just have a quick question. As far as the dealer's license, this is for staff. So what's the process, like, for the police? Like, what is that process?
So when the police are evaluating, they're the... In our town code, the police are the one who administer the issuance of the license. In doing so, they weren't aware of the zoning issues in play. They had no idea that there was a limitation on where on Ridge Road, or that's my understanding anyway. So they don't know the zoning requirements of the various uses and didn't realize that there wasn't even a factor. They were evaluating just the licensee as to whether or not that person meets the requirement set forth in the pawnbroker secondhand dealer regulation. That's a separate standalone code. It's not embedded as part of our zoning code. It's a standalone town regulation.
Okay, thank you.
So we've noted now that we need to have a little cross connection for that process, so that doesn't happen again.
Thanks, Carrie.
Okay. Is there anyone here to speak in favor of... Do you want to speak again?
No, I'm good.
Okay.
I'm just going to thank you.
All right. Is there anyone here to speak in favor of this case? Is there anyone here to speak in opposition of this case? Is there anyone who just wants to talk about this case in any way? If not, if there is no more public input, we will close this case and move on to the next case.
ZB 2021-07-1. Upon the made request of Tisha Brown for an area variance to install six-foot-high side yard fencing exceeding maximum permitted height on premises 79 Driftwood Lane in an R1 residential district.
Could you state your name and address for the record?
My name is Tini Shabrowne, and my address is 79 Driftwood Lane, Rochester, New York, 14617.
Could you raise your right hand? Do you swear and affirm anything you say is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? I'm sorry. And nothing... My writing's all screwed up here, so... And nothing but the truth.
I do.
Sorry, dear.
If you could bring the mic a little closer so that...
I do.
We can pick you up.
Sorry.
Thank you.
Can you state your case?
Oh, sorry. Okay, so I'm asking for a two-foot variance on a four-foot fence for the safety of my child. So I guess him, he has a disability. So he likes to leave, elope, try to get out the house any way he can. And if I put a four-foot fence... I brought pictures on my windows to show you guys. They're older windows, so they're crank-out windows. So they crank all the way out, like a whole human body could fit through there. And if he cranks out the window and gets out the window, he can jump the four-foot fence, which would put him in danger, as opposed to my neighbors who have in-ground pool, neighbor behind me having above-ground pool. And there's, you know, I just want to keep him safe. That's basically my case. I got a letter from Person Center Services. I don't know if you guys...
Yeah, it's in here.
It is, okay.
For the record...
Excuse me?
I guess it's from Darcy Alden?
Yes.
Yes.
Through the OPWDD.
And it's...
Offices for people with disabilities.
Yes.
Yes.
And she's stated, "I am requesting consideration for address 79 Driftwood Lane, Rochester 14617, for permission to, for a six-foot fence to be added to the property for the owner's son. He has a disability, and a four-foot fence would not ensure his health and safety. A six-foot fence would ensure that he, said child is able to remain safe on this property without any danger of his environment. Thank you for your consideration in this matter. If there is any further information needed, or I could be reached at..." And she's got her phone number in here. And basically, the variance is for the area from the rear line to real building line to the front.
Yes.
Is that what you're talking? And it's on both sides of the house?
Well, just, yes. Yes, it is.
And there's going to be no gates or anything going in?
A gate?
A gate going out?
Yes, there will be a gate on one side. Do you have my survey?
Yes.
Okay. So looking at the survey, on the right side of the house, it would just go to the edge of the garage where I have another crank-out window on my garage. On the left side, just from the back of the house, just to the front side of the house, where there are three large crank-out windows. It's like, so it's not, like, obstructing any view away from the corner or because of my house kind of sit back a little?
And can you, just so it doesn't look like a wall... Sometimes we ask people if they can do plantings or something in the front, just so. But which side was going to have the gate, though?
The garage side.
Garage side?
Yes.
Okay.
So the garage is on the... If you're looking at the map, the garage is on the right, right? Is that correct?
Yes.
I was there yesterday, but I just don't remember. Okay. Thank you.
If you said you had pictures, if you can hand them to Sean, he can pass them around.
Can you pass my phone?
Oh, never mind. Never mind. I'm just...
I just, it's just a picture. This is a smaller one, just to kind of give you...
Just a crank-out window?
I can show you. This is a smaller one in the upstairs bathroom, just to show you what they do. Somebody can figure that one, too. That's the bathroom.
I got the same window.
Okay, and that's on the right side of the garage, is that correct?
Oh, they're all, well, there's one on the garage. And then there's three on the left side of the house.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Does anybody else have any other questions for this applicant? Do you have anything else to add, dear?
Um, no, sir.
Then you can sit down if you're all done.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
Is there anyone here to speak in favor of this case? Please step up. And if you could state your name and address for the record?
Daniel R. Gilbo, 69 Driftwood Lane. How you doing, Joe?
How you doing?
Good. I'm the one who has the in-ground pool. And I've met with this lady one time, and she told me she has an autistic son. First thing he said when he moved in is, "Oh, look at the shiny pool." I would move immediately if something ever happened to her son. And I love my house, so I'm in favor of putting up the fence to keep him safe.
Thanks, Danny.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else to speak in favor? All set? Is there anyone here to speak in opposition of this case? Is there anyone who wants to talk to us about fencing, six-foot-high and rear setbacks, and so on and so forth? No? If there are no more public input, we will close this case and move on to the next case.
Okay. ZB 2021-07-2. Upon the made request by Philip Pirelli for an area variance to construct an addition with less than required street-side setback on premises 123 Montclair Drive in an R1 residential district.
Can you state your name and address for the record?
Yes, Philip Pirelli, address 123 Montclair Drive.
Can you raise your right hand? Do you swear and affirm that anything you say tonight is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
You can state your case.
So I was looking to have a mudroom addition as far as put onto my house. The current, and the attached pictures I put into the letter sent out, the current walkway into my home, which is on the garden side, which is where my driveway is, is only four feet long and three feet wide. You know, if I put my elbows out, I can hit the walls. So with a growing family, kind of very limited as far as space walking inside my home as far as to kind of put anything. I currently have a stoop and overhang. I'd like to extend the stoop further out towards the property line and then just have it enclosed as far as to have a mudroom addition for my house. I would just offer something much more functional as far as for a growing family, and I think would also look better from what is currently there to as far as street view for the home.
Is the ground elevation going to be the same, just one step up going in?
It'd just be one step, sir, yes. So the structure itself, if you, from the stoop itself, it would be coming out three feet structure-wise, but then there'd be a two-foot step going up to it. I put in there that the step would be six feet in length, about two feet wide, and eight inches high. So that way I would have a step going into the actual room.
And that's going to bring you...
It'd bring me from what is currently at a, I believe it's a currently 10-foot setback from the property line to five feet. And because it's a corner lot with the street there, I believe the code says that there has to be 35 feet, but the house itself, the house itself doesn't even sit 30 feet from the property line. So anything that would have to be done on this particular side of the house, I'd have to get a variance for.
And it's going to be an enclosed room with a door? You're putting windows on the sides or anything?
Windows would be on both sides.
Yep.
And then obviously a door as far as for the entranceway.
Are you going to try to match the siding and everything that goes with it?
Yes.
Anybody else have any questions? Is there anything you want to add?
No, originally, we, through talking to the town, we thought that all we needed was the permit. And then when the contractor came in to submit for it, we realized that we needed the variance. So I kind of already set everything back. Construction was supposed to happen beginning of June, and obviously, everything's been put on hold. So I'm just looking as far as if I can get this, so that way hopefully I can get it done this year. But because the way everybody with masoneries, masons, and construction workers have been booked, I may have to wait till next year.
Is, you're going to be like, from basement window to basement window, so to speak, and width?
So he has, right now, the width on it is nine feet.
What's the existing?
The existing, the existing is nine feet wide from edge of stoop to edge of stoop. From his measurements, he said that we'd be able to do 10 without, I don't believe that we'd be hitting basement window to basement window. I think there'd still be space between the addition structure and the basement windows would be.
And the host bib, I saw that as going to be moved.
That would be moved.
Okay. That's all I got. Anybody else? No? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone here to speak in favor of this case? Is there anyone to speak in opposition of this case? Does anybody here just want to talk about additions? No? Okay. If there is no more public input, we will close the case and move on to the next case.
ZB 2021-07-3. Upon the made request by Stephanie Delio and Robert Bosco for area variances to install six-foot-high front and side yard fencing exceeding maximum permitted height and linear footage and nonconforming fencing type on a corner lot on premises 89 Wabash Avenue in an R2 residential district.
Could you state your name and addresses for the record?
I'm Stephanie Delio, and this is my partner, Robert Bosco, and we live at 89 Wabash Avenue, 14617.
Can you raise your right hand? Do you swear and affirm that anything you say tonight will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
We're requesting a variance on front yard fencing in height, length, and style of fencing. The property is built in such a way that there is no backyard to the property. It is only front and side yard. We have two dogs, and we would like to build a six-foot dog-eared style fence that wraps around the front. that wraps around the front and the side of the yard, um, so that we could have a little privacy for us and our dogs.
And, um, there's a letter in here, you're not the owners?
Uh, my mother is the property owner, she's also here.
And there's a letter in here stating that I am the owner of the property located at Fort Parkview Terrace, tax address eighty-nine Wabash, one-four-six-one-seven, in the town of Aronequite, and where I approve of my tenants, Stephanie Delio and Robert Bosco, seeking a variance and install fencing on the property, and it's signed, Jekyll and Delio. Thank you. Does anybody got questions? The, I, I know these corner lots are, are crazy. My, my only concern was a little bit when I drove by there is the way that corner is with stops and people coming up with a, a fence wall, are you going into, in two or three feet from the property line, or?
I, I think our plan is, we're gonna have it set back five to six feet off the road, just to try to make sure, and then where the two spruce trees are up on the corner with the stop sign, we're gonna kitty-corner that back.
Kitty-corner it back.
So, it's not uptight to that corner at all, is the plan.
Does anybody got any questions? Sean? No? Okay. I guess we're all set?
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone here to speak in favor of this case? Is there anyone here to speak in opposition of this case?
My name is Timothy Sangle, eighty-two Wabash Avenue, Rochester, New York, one-four-six-one-seven. I'm here to oppose the six-foot fence across the, uh, front of the property. Uh, it does not meet existing regulations, I believe existing regulations are forty-eight inches. Uh, it blocks the traffic, even a forty-eight-inch fence extending that far into the, uh, corner angle of the two streets where they're intersection, uh, is too high for safety. Uh, it is a corner lot, and it blocks the view of, of both streets, uh, and that, I don't know where that, uh, I haven't seen the diagram of what they plan on doing, but it, it does not appear to be, um, within regulations. Thank you, Donna. Yeah, um, again, it's not in character with the neighborhood. And six feet is, is quite lot, uh, tall for a corner lot and a solid fence. And as far as, um, uh, the, um, character of the, the neighborhood and as far as their privacy, every house around it, except for few on Parkview Terrace, is higher than, uh, the six feet. So, that would be, uh, it wouldn't be necessarily help the privacy. That's all I have to say for now.
Thank you. Is there anyone else, anyone else to speak in opposition? Does anyone here who wants to talk about fencing? If there is no more public input, we will close this case and move on to the next case.
ZB twenty-two-one oh seven dash four. Upon the matter of request by Luis Perez for an area variance to construct a deck in the side yard with less than required side setback on premises five Ridgeport Circle, also known as one sixteen Ridgeport Drive and an R-one residential district.
Hello, my name is Luis Perez. I live at five Ridgeport Circle, or also known as one-one-six Ridgeport Drive, one-four-six-one-seven.
And I'm co-owner and partner, Rosemary Hall, um, at five Ridgeport Circle, also known as one sixteen Ridgeport Drive.
Thank you, can you raise your right hand? Do you swear and affirm that anything you say tonight will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you. And we have your pictures up here.
Okay, we're requesting a variance, we would like to build a deck which would be level, um, with our back doors. Um, and the regulation is for twenty-four feet, we have twenty-one feet and change, so we're short by two foot and change. We moved into this house at the end of May, and we did so because we needed to be in a ranch. I was in a bad car accident, I've had three surgeries and need more. Uh, and we wanted to have everything on one level. The intent of the deck is to be able to make it so that there are no steps going out from our house onto the deck, and also that it will be big enough to put our table, grill, chairs, hammock, et cetera, et cetera, and also entertain friends and family that also live in Aronequite. There were six pieces of paper that are different, based on the signatures that were passed out to everybody. They are from our neighbors, two of them live on the circle, one of them is across from us on the circle, one is across from us on the street, and two of them are adjacent to our house. With respect to the pictures, the first one shows the fence and what's our side yard from the circle or backyard from the street. And that's, we're gonna put in a four-foot solid vinyl fence where the broken-down wood fence is. And if you take a look at our, uh, second picture, that is our backyard. The deck would run roughly to where you see the ground cover. Um, it would start and finish at the angled parts that meet the furthest back end of the house that's flat. And if you take a look at the third picture, you will be able to see the opposite side where it would start from, and basically, our backyard. It is very private back there, it's very quiet. Trees would line the full area where the deck would basically reside, and the deck will be professionally installed, gray, with, uh, white vinyl trim. And that's why we're requesting our variance.
Did you say you had some signatures or letters?
What was that?
Did you say you had some letters?
Yeah, there were six letters that were passed around. They all read the same, but they're signatures from different neighbors. So, there are three neighbors that are on the circle, one happens to be directly across the street from the fence in the first picture. The other one is directly across the street, which is Ridgeport Drive, and two of the neighbors are adjacent to our home. So, it would basically be from the circle, it would be the side yard and the backyard. And they have, they were in approval of our having a variance granted so that we could put the deck in.
I believe you all have different copies, so if you put them together, you'll have six.
Okay, that's what I was gonna say, 'cause, uh, yeah. 'Cause I have, um, you wanna read off who you have?
I got, uh, Frances Flanagan, ten Ridgeport Circle.
So, she's right across from us on the circle.
She's actually the only one that can see the backyard, the side yard that you call side yard, our backyard.
Yeah, I got Tamara Wilson, sis, sis, sis narrow.
Yep, she's right next to us, facing that yard.
So, if you take a look at the picture with the fence, she's the house to the right.
Thank you.
I got Diane Blaisley, thirty-seven Ridgeport Circle.
Oh, I'm sorry, Donna, mine was, uh, there's no address on this one.
Who is it?
The Miss Wilson, sis narrow, sis narrow. There's no address on that. Yeah, I'm just giving it down.
We just gotta read them off anyhow, too.
Yeah, I just didn't have the address.
Wanna read off?
I have Yolanda Love, fifty Ridgeport Circle.
Yes.
She's on the circle.
Come on, Donna.
And I have Shara Ballantic at seventy-eight Ridgeport Drive.
She's behind us.
She would be what you consider our side yard.
So, how many total letters were there, five?
Donna.
Five?
Donna.
Did you get a copy of these?
Six.
So, how many total letters were there?
There, there's one that's missing, that's Jerry, he's directly across the street.
On Ridgeport Drive.
I got five here.
Alright.
Yeah, it was my fault, I thought they were all different, the same, so I apologize.
Do you have anything else to state?
No, sir.
Nope? Okay. We'll see, go to the next here.
Thank you.
Is there anyone he- here to speak in favor of this case? Is there anyone here to speak in opposition of this case? Is there anyone here who wants to talk about, talk to us about decks? If there is no further input, we will close this case and move on to the next case.
Case ZB twenty-two-one oh seven dash five. Upon the matter of request by Fitzgerald Engineering P L L C, acting as agent for the Holland Trotta Project for area variances to subdivide an existing parcel into two lots, with proposed lot number one exceeding maximum impervious area and with less than required lot area, front and rear setbacks on premises seventeen-hundred Hudson Avenue and an M Manufacturing District and an R-four residential district.
Can you state your name and address?
Absolutely, I'm Ray Trotta from Holland Trotta Project, our address is two-seventy-seven Alexander Street, Suite two-ten, and that's Rochester, New York.
Do you swear and, raise your right hand, do you swear and affirm, you, anything you say tonight will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do. Ladies, well, no ladies here, but gentlemen of the board, I just wanted to, uh, take a little bit of an opportunity to, um, present this project, that this, this one's pretty simple, um, the, our client, which is the Eagle Ridge community, um, a probably familiar Eagle Ridge Circle, it also has some manufacturing piece. It actually has a combination of R-six, R-four, and manufacturing on their overall parcel. And Tim Haynes, which is one of the owners, his, his grandmother was the original owner of the farm that was, that was parceled off to make the Eagle Ridge, and whatnot. Which Eagle Ridge Circle is right at this area, it wraps around, and then, uh, their commercial facilities are right in this area. And then there's a flag lot that goes behind the plaza, that's this parcel right here. The, there's a couple of commercial spaces, daycare, and legal offices at the front, um, Hudson. And then, this was a new building that we, uh, designed and put in there, um, probably, I wanna say, three years ago, two, about three years ago. Uh, the reason why we're here is the bright red-orange that you have in your exhibit is what we're looking to parcel off. And what they're trying to do is they're just refinancing, and the banks won't allow you to refinance a building, which they just built under the situation where there's multiple buildings on the same lot. So, the bank is requiring that this is a separate parcel, and that's the reason why we're, we're here tonight. So, basically, uh, by doing so, it creates a few variances. Uh, it basically, going down the list is, the lot area is number one, which basically, there's three thousand square foot by code allocated to each unit, which puts you at fifty-four thousand square feet, and we actually, in this lot size, actually have thirty-one thousand square feet. Uh, variance two is a front setback, is basically fifty, uh, feet, but because of the front setback goes to the side on here, it's, it's, it's behind this other parcel of the building. Uh, so that decreases that down to ten feet. The rear setback, and, and just, just as a footnote, when I say front setback, it's really the rear or the front setback of the, the property that's in front of it, which they also own. Uh, so, the, uh, one owner owns all this. And, uh, the rear setback is sixty feet, and we have it at nine-point-five feet. The reason for this is this parking lot, uh, this is designed to accommodate this building right, right to the, uh, adjacent to it. And in the future, when we originally had this approved, this was going to be a, uh, residential, we were gonna convert them, uh, uh, manufacturing building into a residential apartment building. But they decided to keep this manufacturing, but they may in the future do an apartment building on this backside. So, they wanna keep that parking lot, obviously, for that area. Uh, and variance four is the impervious area, by doing this lot, it, it puts us, it's supposed to be eighty percent, and we're actually at eighty-six. So, these sound like significant variances, however, one owner owns all of this, and the reason we're parceling it as we are is so we don't, uh, create complications in the future. So, what we're trying to do is keep this allocated to this building. There is cross-access easements, and will be drafted up for every, for, uh, access, for parking, for everything. So, this whole facility will remain as sharing their parking, sharing their access, uh, back and throughout. This is more or less, this is an exercise purely so they could refinance the building, and obviously, F L is pretty familiar with this type of process, but, uh, uh, that's basically why we're here tonight, and I just wanted to go through that this is just lines on paper. We are not changing, uh, anything with the character of the neighborhood, we're not changing, uh, from the variance process, if you will, we're not changing any negative impact from an environmental standpoint. We're literally just putting survey markers on, on a plat map so they could refinance. So, there's really zero impact as far as on the detriment from, we're not changing a thing. Being fencing or anything like that added. I'm just here to answer questions if anyone has any.
I guess, was the whole property seventeen-hundred?
Yes, that is correct.
How, how's that gonna change?
The, um, that would be something that the, so, once the subdivision goes through, they would work with the, um, with nine-one-one and the assessor's office to identify the mailing address for the parcel. Um, the existing building, Eagle Ridge Department Building does have a, a designated, um, a street address, so they might use that, or they would come up with another mechanism for assigning the legal parcel id, um, address.
Okay, thank you.
And just so you know, I just bring a footnote that we will go into planning, so, uh, we're trying to seek approval tonight. And then if approved, then we would move on to planning to present it as well.
And just sort of to clarify, because the portion, there's a portion of the lot that's zoned residential, if this was all a commercial, um, zoning parcel, it would be administratively approved once the zoning variances, if, if granted, were achieved. Um, but because there's a portion of the lot that's zoned residential, they have to go to the planning board, um, to, to get the, the approval to separate the lots.
Which portion is residential?
It's actually the R, see the, looking at the blue highlighted area? The arm that comes down, that's zoned R-four.
It's R-four, here, right.
Behind the, um, behind the, adjacent to the plaza. So, it's a little bit of a, um, a jumbled zoning, uh, landscape on this section of Ridge and Hudson, and that's one of the reasons we need both boards' approvals to move forward with subdivision.
And is lot one residential now, is that what that was?
Um, thi- this is, this is actually manufactured. And I believe that, I believe the, uh, R-four is over here. Manufacturing is this lot, and then this lot is R-six.
Okay.
R-five.
Oh, R-five, I'm sorry.
Not that I have the zoning map committed to memory, but here we are.
There's a lot of Rs. That's one of the things we wanna work out in the future with the town, too, is, is hopefully clearing some of this up on, it's kind of a jumble of, of zoning in this area.
Okay. So, there's no new construction, though, correct?
Nothing, it's all built.
So, if you drive by, it's gonna look exactly the same?
Correct, the, the building was built three years ago, F L, and it was, uh, and at that time, their financing was no issue because it was a construction loan, but now that they're refinancing it, that's when it comes into the ALTA and all, all the other requirements of having it a separate lot.
Is the refines, financing gonna be under the same name?
Um, same owners, I'm not sure if they have an LLC or whatnot, that I'm not positive.
I got, what happens with the, the parking here? You said there's cross-easements?
Cross-parking easements and cross-access easements, so parking is shared for everybody. So, I, I.
From blue, blue to red and red to white, white to blue?
Correct, everybody can use the parking, and, and all of that will be drafted up as part of the final approval.
And, and the town won't sign off on the, uh, the subdivision plans?
It would.
The planning board chair won't, we won't issue the, the plans to be signed either by the planning board chair that they would need to file with the county clerk's office until we've assured that everything that's needed is in place as far as easements go.
It, it wouldn't, in this particular case, it wouldn't even make sense to break it up, it just, because they wouldn't benefit from the parking. It just, it would be a nightmare if you didn't have cross-access easements.
So what, and maybe you can help me out. What is cross-access easement? Because actually, my, my kids go to the doctor over there, and it's, it's kind of crazy because...
What a cross-access easement is legally, anyone here has the right to use, for, to access the space and also to park their vehicle. So, so more or less with the cross-accesses, it means all these buildings and owners and, and customers have rights to park in those areas and drive.
Okay. Yeah, because I, I just noticed when I was there looking at the property that like the doctor's office, they put signs up. And I mean, can they do that for like specific spots?
Technically, no.
Okay.
That might be the owner themselves trying to do that themselves.
Yeah.
Because I know Greg or Tim are, are not advocating that, you know.
Okay.
I think that's probably just a business owner is just taking it apart.
Preference, yeah, yeah.
To put a, a little bit, it's, it's, to me, it's just as frustrating as we've all experienced with COVID going on, is that they have that pickup, pickup parking areas in a plaza, which is not really designated to them, but they're just kind of doing it and waiting it. So I think that's more the case.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Just, Carrie, do you recall, I don't know if you recall or not, but the land bank parking? Was that to a specific building or was that for the whole site?
I believe it was intended for the, the land bank parking, I believe, was intended for the apartment complexes, presuming that both were going to be coming online as residential structures. So with only, with the Eagle Ridge new building in, that's been constructed, the, the manufacturing parking standards and requirements would remain as is. So that means that the required parking would likely not be as much as it would have been back when the, the whole project was reviewed and approved by both boards. So what we'll do is, with the questions raised, well, if we need to potentially call an audible and add parking relief to this particular application, we'll review that and advise during the break.
Okay.
And just so you know, the land bank you're referring to, this, this was, this was not built, this parking?
No, it's still grass or whatever.
Yeah, that's correct. That's correct. It was approved, but since the other building was never built, or, or never converted, they, they just didn't go forward with the parking. It wasn't necessary.
And, and the rationale behind that was to not increase pavement and impervious service if it wasn't absolutely required. So the, the idea was to only build it if it should have been needed.
And Carrie, I'm not sure this, this would be a discussion item. If, if the board is amenable to it, if we could add that as a condition of the planning board approval in the next one, so we don't slow down by a month?
No, no, the, so the, we'll advise on whether or not the parking isn't an additional requirement for this action for if zoning relief is needed. And then if that's the case, then the, this board has the ability to potentially add that to their motion if they're so inclined.
Appreciate it.
As long as we got the cross-easements and the, for the parking and stuff, I'm okay with it.
Fair enough. Very convoluted operation here. It's a lot of lines.
Do you have anything else to add?
I do not.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Is there anyone here to speak in favor of this case? Is there anyone here to speak in opposition? Is there anyone who wants to talk to us about the case? If not, we'll close the case in public hearing and go to the next case.
ZB 2021-07-6. Upon the matter of request by Bishop Carney High School for an area, for area variances to install a new digital LED monument sign with less than required front setback and exceeding maximum square footage and height on premises 125 Kings Highway South and an R1 residential district.
Can you state your name and address for the record?
Yeah, my name is Michael Gardner. I work at Empire Digital Signs at 200 West Ridge Road, Suite 212, Rochester, New York 14615. And we're looking to install an outdoor...
Raise your right hand. Do you swear and affirm, anything you say tonight will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes. So we are looking to install an outdoor LED located at Bishop Carney High School at 125 Kings House Highway South. The overall height of the sign is eight foot, eight inches. So that's one of the variants for overall height of six feet. And also looking for another variance of over 32 square feet. There's a light box section of the, on the LED, which is 15.2 total square feet. And the light box, will just have the name Bishop Carney on it. And that's just acrylic, won't change at all. And then the LED portion is 25.9 square feet. So that's a total of 41.1 square feet for the total sign. The electronic LED will be utilized for displaying events that are coming up, general community messaging, recognition of holidays, celebrations, honeries, et cetera. The section is maintained via software with content that is capable of scheduling and when the content is going to be displayed. And the electronic LED has a built-in sensor for maintaining acceptable levels of brightness with a maximum brightness of 10,000 nit, which is an ISO standard similar to candela per meter squared. So basically, the sign will peak in brightness during the day. And then when ambient light is the highest, it gradually lowers as the ambient light decreases that night.
And the old sign's being removed, right?
Yeah, the, the old sign is being removed. And we're, we are moving the new, the intended new LED approximately 100 feet south. Position more center on the high school.
Towards where the statue is now, or is it going to be?
Just more centered on the high school.
There's a sign there now for an event. Is that where the telephone pole is? Is that the area? I got, I got the picture. I just, I just trying to, because it's more center, and I thought the statue was center at the school. Can you come up? State your name and address.
My name's Mike Searle. I'm the Director of Facilities of Bishop Carney High School. Where this current sign is now, which is very close to the entrance to the front loop, and where the statue is, we want to place that sign almost in the middle between those two. So that when you're heading south on Kings Highway, it's easier to see. By the time you see the old sign now heading south, that you're, you're on top of it and past it.
It's going to be before the statue then?
Yeah, so if you're heading south, it'll be before the statue, yes. Is there, you all probably have seen that, that old sign is quite an eyesore. And it doesn't work anymore, so, and we can't get leverage for it, so it's time to upgrade.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Before you, can I just say for the record, how far is it from the property line to sign?
It's set, yeah, 125 inch setback from the inner west edge of the sidewalk.
Okay. Inch, okay, I see, 125.
Anybody else have any questions? Thank you. Is there anyone here to speak in favor of the case? Is there anyone here to speak in opposition of the case? Is there anyone here who wants to talk about us, about signs of this case? State your name and address.
Yep, my name's Phil Sip. I live at 125 Kings Gate South, Rondekway. 14617.
Go ahead.
So, you know, I'm sure the sign would be beautiful. My only concern is we recently just moved into the house. And it's, it's a bit discouraging to look out the back window and see, you know, a tree that's been through the fence for some time now, piles of, of limbs and trees that have been down that aren't being taken care of. So I'm not sure that it makes all the sense in the world to talk about spending money on a sign when there's other things that I think the money could be spent on. There's knee-high weeds on the tennis courts. So that, that's my only concern with this case. And I have pictures to show, you know, what I'm speaking of, what we have to look at each day, if you want to take a look.
You're not opposed to the sign going up, though?
I'm not opposed to the sign. I just think that other things need to be...
And I would just encourage you to engage the town directly on your concerns. But given we're here just to address the sign. I don't know, Mr. Chair, if you have other feelings or thoughts?
No, it's, it's a good, good point there. Because that's what we're heading today in direction. The maintenance there, if you have a problem with the town, you should be giving them a call to see what they can do.
I also attended to just figure out what the monument was. I, I got the notice in the mail, so. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
If there is no more public input, we will close this case and take a short recess until 8:10. Thank you.
Like to open the meeting back up?
And let me see. Is there anyone here from five thirty-five East Ridge Road? Are you guys out there?
They're there.
Okay. Seventy-nine Driftwood Lane? One twenty-three Montclair Drive? Eighty-nine Wabash? Five Ridgeport Circle? Seventeen hundred?
Yes.
And Bishop Carney's here too, okay. Okay. Does anybody want to make a motion for case ZB twenty twenty-one dash oh six dash ten?
Excuse me, uh, Acting Chairman.
Okay, I'm sorry.
May I just jump in? Uh, because this is an unlisted action for the purposes of Seeker. This board typically only, for the most part, deals with type two, which you just gently acknowledge. However, because this is an unlisted action, um, in, for the purposes of Seeker, we do need to review, um, part two and part three of the, um, short form that is in front of you.
Uh huh.
So in looking at the, and again, the pro- the proposed action is to allow for a use variance to allow the relocation of an existing, um, pawn shop, non-conforming pawn shop secondhand dealer relocate into the exi- uh, the, an existing building located in the same zoning district where it's located now, just a, a short distance away. Um, the site is an, um, an existing development and no physical changes to the building or site are associated with the proposed change in use. Um, in considering the potential environmental impacts, the following issues, um, were reviewed or examined. Impact to community character, the proposed business will be located in vicinity of existing commercial establishments and plazas with similar uses. There are no physical change, changes proposed to the area as a result of this change, um, and relocation of this business to this area. Um, traffic, the proposed location was previously occupied by the Salvation Army Secondhand Clothing Store, which sold clothing and some used home goods. The use, um, would, uh, be permitted, the, the use that would be permitted through the use variance would not generate any significant change in traffic, um, to the area. And really primarily, those are the only two areas that need to be examined for the purposes of Seeker, given that it's a, a, an existing buil- business looking to relocate into an existing building on the same corridor. And for that, um, based on that analysis, I would recommend to this board that you, A, adopt a negative declaration for the purposes of Seeker. So you'd want a separate resul- uh, separate motion to make that negative declaration if you're so inclined.
Does anybody want to make a motion?
I, I can make a motion. I'll make a motion that we-
I give a declaration.
Yeah, that we accept the negative de- uh, declaration.
Second.
Second shot? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? And we have one board member absent. Two board members, not one. One board member has, we got the alternate, okay.
Charles E.
So now we go to the regular motion then. One, two, three, four, five.
Charles E. and Isaac.
Yes, I apologize, yeah, you are, even though you have a, an alternate, you still are five. Yes.
Do we have a motion on this, uh, action?
I'll move to approve the use variance for, um, for this, for case number ZB two oh two one oh six dash one oh.
I'll second. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion granted. So that's one, two, three.
If you all want, I know you're very riveted to stay and watch how everybody else is doing, but you're the first application, so now is the time, if you're trying to exit, now is a good time. Yes, especially since there's an army of you. Yes. You're welcome. Chairman, just for your knowledge, or Acting Chairman, just for your knowledge, uh, the remaining items on the agenda are all type two. And no further seeker analysis is required, so that doesn't even need, we can acknowledge that as, for the record, right now, that all the rest of the remaining cases are a type two and no further seeker or environmental analysis is required.
So, the rest of the cases here are all type two actions, so there's no other declarations or-
Seeker is concluded, just by virtue of, by virtue of being a type two.
Thank you for your help.
You're welcome.
You do have to mention it though, right? He does have to mention it's a type two action for seeker.
Well, we can, we can, we can do that now as a blanket and then repeat it for you, the action, um, it'll be reflected in the, um, decision letter. And it'll, it's, it'll be reflected in the, the formal record.
Does anybody want to make a motion on seventy-nine Driftwood Lane?
I'll make a motion that we grant the, uh, request at seventy-nine Driftwood Lane based on the following facts and findings. Um, number one, uh, it's not really a substantial request. She's asking for a two-foot variance. Um, there's many fences and people have added many fences since I've been on the board, uh, different portions of the fence, um, so it's in character with the neighborhood. Um, she did, uh, the applicant did provide testimony about needing the fence for, uh, additional safety needs. The, there was also some testimony and evidence brought up from a neighbor that, um, stated that, um, he had a pool and lived close by, and it would be, uh, helpful as far as, um, uh, as far as safety concerns and issues, um. And as far as other alternatives, I mean, to me, any other alternative wouldn't, um, help the issue with her son who has special needs. And, uh, or if she chose not to put up a fence, she also indicated that her windows on her house, which, if she were to make a change to her windows, would be a significant detriment to her finances. Um, and so, given that, uh, based on those facts and findings, I, uh, request, or I, um, I request that we approve the a- the application as written by the applicant.
Second.
All those in favor say?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Do we have a motion for one twenty-three Montclair Drive?
I'll make a motion. Uh, and move that we, uh, approve the application as it's been presented. Uh, I think the property owner has done their due diligence to ensure that the addition is, uh, remains in keeping with the aesthetic of both the home and the surrounding neighborhood. Uh, given the restrictive nature of the existing entryway, I believe that this, uh, addition is a practical enhancement to the property, um, and does not warrant alternative proposals. Uh, this isn't a significant request, uh, and it doesn't appear that there'd be any discernible physical and environmental impacts that would result from this addition. Uh, for these reasons, I'd move that we approve the application.
I'll second.
All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Motion carries. We have a motion on twenty eighty-nine Wabash Avenue? Anybody?
I'll make a motion. Uh, I'll move that we approve the application as it's been presented. Um, many corner lots, not only in the neighborhood, but throughout Aronacoyte features, side yard and front fencing or shrubbery, uh, for the purposes of private, privacy and separation from pedestrian and vehicle traffic. Uh, I think the proposed fencing would be consistent, uh, with this feature. Given the challenges of corner lots, this one included, I don't believe that there are viable alternatives. Um, the linear footage request is significant, however, again, noting the challenges of these types of property, properties, I believe the request is practical and appropriate. Um, installation of the fencing won't result in unwanted physical or environmental damage. Uh, and for these reasons, I'd move that we support the application.
I'll second it.
Do you second?
I did. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed?
Nay.
So we got four a's and one nay? That's what I'm taking. Motion carries.
Just so we're clear, it's the yellow portion and the orange, correct? So there, there's gonna be four, that's, so we're all clear. There's, there's a side yard and a front yard.
Yes. Yes, for both.
Right, okay, gotcha.
I don't have orange in mind.
There was your saying, Sean?
What's that?
For the side and front setbacks?
Yes.
Well, not the su- setback, the, the actual fence is six foot high in the front yard along Wabash.
There's a different drawing than me.
That's what it is. It's six foot high in the front. It's not a setback. Wabash is gonna have a six foot high fence along here, not just on Park View. Okay.
So that motion carries.
Thank you.
This is case number ZB twenty twenty-one dash zero seven dash four, five Ridgeport Circle. Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion that we grant the application as written by the applicant at five Ridge, Ridgeport Circle based on the following facts and findings. Um, as far as character of the neighborhood, it's not gonna change much at all. Many people in the town have a back deck. Um, it's actually would enhance the property and the neighborhood. Uh, as far, as far as alternative solutions, uh, the couple, or the, the applicants, uh, presented the fact that the gentleman was in a car accident and he would like to recreate at his house. So it's an, uh, an opportunity for him and his partner to, um, recreate, uh, an age in place, uh, at their home. So the only other alternative solution would be for them, you know, not to do it, or to put in some type of, uh, concrete or, um, different style of patio, um. As far as, uh, the substantial request, like I stated earlier, it's not a substantial request, um, as far as, uh, the variance and, and what they're asking for. And, um, adverse effects on the neighborhood, it would enhance the character of the neighborhood based on the testimony of the pictures. Um, it sounds like from the applicant, he's also, uh, they're both actually gonna put up a vinyl fence as well that will, uh, improve, uh, their property as well as the, the neighborhood character. And is it self-created? Well, one could argue that m- many of these projects are self-created, but I think, um, it outweighs the, the, the safety or the, uh, concerns of, um, aging in place as well as, um, them to enjoy their property and, and staying around Aronacoyte would outweigh any self-created issue. So based on those facts and findings, I would suggest to the board that we grant the application as written.
Second.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye? Oppose? Motion carries.
I think Kerry wants to be here for the next one, so go to the last one.
Bishop Carney? The last one?
Yep.
It would be, uh, case ZB twenty twenty-one dash zero seven dash six.
Okay, and, um, I was saying before, it's on the, um, it's on the agenda that it's required a front setback, but on your handout, we didn't mark it down, so, sorry about that. It was at, it was realized later. Um, you know, the sheet that we give you. So fifteen feet's required for that sign for setback. So 15 feet's required for that sign, for setback. And they're asking for... Oh, it is on there, never mind, it's on there. Sorry, all right. I thought it wasn't on there, apologize. All right, good.
Does anybody want to make a motion?
I'll move that we approve the application as it has been presented.
Are you okay with the distance from the sidewalk and everything going that way?
Yep.
Okay.
I'll second it.
All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries.
Last one.
Okay, so now we're going back to, where am I?
1700 Hudson.
ZB 2021-07-5, that's 1700 Hudson Avenue. Anybody want to make a motion? And is there any input that you would like to give?
Yeah, I'd like to move that we, that the zoning board approve this application. I don't see being undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood since they're not changing anything other than some lot lines. Other alternatives that do not require variance are not to do the subdivision, but that's going to require issues with their financing and getting the bank to approve the project. So I don't think that's a critical stumbling block. It's not a substantial variance, given the type, nature of the properties and the properties that are, the uses that are around this site. I don't see any adverse physical or environmental impacts since, again, nothing is changing on the site. And they do have to go before the planning board for final approvals. It is self-created in the sense that they're asking to do this because they have to go through financing and stuff, but that is not an obstacle to stopping such a variance. Therefore, ask approval of it.
Mr. Upson, before you ask for a second for your motion, would you mind also indicating that, to the extent that a parking variance may be needed, that that be included as part of your motion? Would you be amenable to that?
Is the parking variance needed? I thought the cross easements would cover that.
So the way our code reads hasn't caught up to the shared parking model and our code reads that all required parking has to be provided on the given lot and not on an adjacent lot without that variance. So to cover, in the interest of the applicant, it's probably best to include the parking relief as part of the motion to the extent that it may be needed. But we even, based on the count, the one of the parcels is fine and has sufficient parking. The other would likely buy right on its own. The other would likely need to borrow the parking that's available on the adjacent site to meet the zoning obligation, not necessarily the functionality of the parking area.
Yeah, I don't have a problem with that. I just, I assume that the cross easements would take care of that.
Yeah, and just in the interest of making our, sometimes murky zoning code more solid, I would appreciate if you wouldn't mind that addition.
That's fine with me to add that to the motion.
Motion for the parking?
Yeah.
Can I have a second?
Second.
Ryan?
No, Sean.
Sean? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And we got one last thing to do, I believe, is the minutes. Has everybody had a chance to look at the minutes?
Yes.
You can't vote on this one because you weren't here. Anybody have any questions or changes?
Need a motion to approve?
I'll second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries and...
Oh, excuse me, I think FL, would you need to abstain?
He's got to abstain, yes.
Oh, he already did, I'm sorry, I missed that. Okay, all right, just want to make for the record.
With that, I will close the meeting. Yeah, really. Kerry, I want to go over these to make sure I did them right. I don't have a pen to sign, so.
We hope you enjoyed this presentation of the Aronacote Zoning Board on ICAT Government Access.